Okay, I make that two o'clock, so are we good to start? Willie?
Yes, thanks very much, convener. And the meeting is being recorded and will be placed on the website for public viewing. So I'd like to take a roll call for the minute, and I would ask if members would confirm their present when I call their name. Billy Keenan.
Present.
Got a poll from Beale, right, and councillor Crookshank is kindly attending as her substitute. Councillor Crookshank, present.
Present.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you. Bailey Scott.
Here.
Yeah, thank you. I got a poll from Bailey Robertson. Councillor Mills is kindly attending as her substitute. Councillor Mills, present.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Black.
Yes, I'm here.
And I've got a poll from councillor Nakla and Bailey Source kindly attending as her substitute. Bailey Source, present.
Yes, here.
Councillor Short. Councillor Short, present.
See councillor Short on. As if she can't hear you.
Okay, the, the, thank you very much. That concludes the roll call. Now going to declarations of interest. It's one of any members of any declarations to the content of the agenda as it stands. There have been no declarations then. That takes you on to education Scotland, the JMA inspection of St Fergus Primary School. This report by executive director of children and family service.
As an officer, I want to say a few words before we go to questions on this report.
Happy to just give a high level introduction, Billy Keenan, if that's okay. So this is the report. Thank you. And we have on the call, obviously, my head of education, Paul Fleming, and also Mr Bald, the head teacher of St Fergus. So if you've got questions for the two of them, that's great. And so this is a report from the inspection back in December twenty twenty four for St Fergus that we know serves the Adler community in our city. It also has, it's worth mentioning, and quite a significant enhanced support area for children with additional and complex needs. And at the time of this inspection, there were, as you can see from the demographic profile there, sixty eight percent of our children living in, deaths as one in two, and two thirds as identified as having additional support needs. So gives you an idea of the profile of the school. As you've heard me and Paul saying before, always disappointing the short model. We always feel it sells the school short almost, that there's, there's so much more. But just on this occasion, again, a short model, so just the two quality indicators, looking at learning, teaching assessment and raising attainment achievement. Both evaluated as good in terms of HMI's evaluation. So that's, that's a positive report overall. I'm sure you'll agree, it's, it's, it's very positive and reads even better than that. And really reassuring around some of the, the key highlights around the school's nurturing ethos, the, the staff team led by Mr Bald, the respectful relationships and so on. And, and it's always a delight for us when we see the children themselves described as the strength of the school. As described as polite, well managed, proud and so on. Strong inclusive practice, community based lay and then lots around skills development and helping young people to develop and talk about that confidently. But as always, we're scrutiny of these areas for improvement. And if you want to hear more about that, as the same Mr Fleming, Mr Bald are on the call. But that, that, that about pace and challenge, we've seen reflected in many inspections and ownership of learning and so on. But the main thing is inspectors believe that the school has capacity to continue to improve. And so there's no plan for their visits, which is very reassuring. And anything that's highlighted as improvement, we would expect to see and quality assure their own processes in the next school improvement plan. So I'll leave it there. And as I say, Mr Bald and Mr Fleming are available for questions.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I'll, I'll just go over the questions then. I think it's Billy McPherson.
Thanks very much, convener, and thanks Audrey for the introduction. I think despite the fact this is the short model, I think it's an extremely positive report in what it actually did inspect. And, you know, as David Bald is on the call today, I would just like personally, and I'm sure for the whole committee, to pass on our thanks for, you know, the good work that's going on in St Fergus. And, you know, to, if he could pass that on to the whole team at St Fergus Primary School, because it is a, an excellent report with a lot of very positive key strengths, which is very good to read. Audrey, I had one question for you and I have one question for David as the head teacher. I previously mentioned it's helpful if there are previous inspection reports, if the previous information could be included. Now, I do realise over time, the, the method of inspection varies. And I'm also aware of the fact that in the case of some primary schools, the gap between inspections can be very long. I'm just really wondering in this case, is there nothing that's, shall we say, anything other than purely historic and not really worth including in the report? And my second question's really, I'll, I'll let Audrey answer that one first, and then I'll come on to my question to, to the head teacher, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I, I realise it's, it's really helpful for you to do that. And the, the next report, in fact, gives us a, gives us an example of that. But no, I, I think historically it was, it was a bit out of time. But I will actually check with Paul Fleming if he has any further information to come in, because I, I'm not aware when the last one was. Right at this moment, you'll have that in front of me. So I'll see if Paul has that.
Thank you for the question, Billy McPherson. And we had a separate exchange about this as well. And I would think moving forward will want to always either include that or comment as to why to say to you, asking that question. We do not have the full reports and they're not available anymore from education Scotland from the last time the school was inspected. It was also inspected, as you alluded to before, using a different framework and completely different quality indicators. But what we do have is information around some of those ranges. So for example, curriculum was graded as good. Curriculum's not inspected at the moment. Meeting learner needs. So again, a different quality indicator was, was graded as good. Improvement in performance was graded as good. Then it looks at the wider children experiences and how the school is able to improve through the quality of their self evaluation. And that was rated as very good using the old model as well, which again is reflected in this one, even though it wasn't looking at that in terms of the school knows itself. Everything that's working on is in its improvement plan. But it would take a lot of explaining in a paper to, to look at the different models and how they were done, different quality indicators. But we will look at reflecting a comment, as I say, because we do think it's valid to, to see where the school has come from. If it's the same model in inspection, then we'll obviously include that as well.
Yeah, that's very helpful indeed. I think the lesson I draw from that is that there's been a, you know, long period of good performance at St Fergus. And I think that's very reassuring. My question for David Bald as the head teacher is really around the information on the, on page six of the report, around the area for improvement about the pace of learning, where it says teachers should ensure that all learning activities are well matched, all needs of children. In doing so, they should ensure that the pace of learning in lessons is brisker. I was just really wondering if the head teacher could perhaps comment on that and what's being done to ensure that particular comment on the part of the inspectors is being addressed.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the kind words. I'll pass that on to the staff this afternoon. With regards to activities well matched, that was particularly in relation to our specialist and enhanced provision, where there was some really good practice within the mainstream, is how we can use that and build on that within our specialist provision in terms of the children with the complex needs and ensuring that we are pushing them to, to, to meet their needs at that brisker pace. It took us a bit of time to get the children settled, coming back. We've had a big cohort coming into the primary one. So we're at that stage now in term two, coming into the final term, where we're making big steps to, to do that. So it was replicating what we've got in the mainstream school and how we can scale that for the enhanced provision and the specialist provisions.
That's very helpful indeed, David. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Billy Scott.
I'd like to ask about the second bullet point in the areas for improvement, please, where it says that this should include children more regularly leading and taking responsibility for their own learning. I can understand how that would work in practice for secondary school aged pupils. But how does that work for primary school pupils and how would that be demonstrated?
Thank you for the question, Billy Scott. I'll come in and then pass to David, I think, for the examples. What I would say, Billy Scott, and I think one of the things we find, and a couple of members have commented before, when we see, well, inspectors have sadly used before as a strong good, this is often a go to that they include as, as a next step, which is very interesting. We've seen this quite commonly, a lot of our really positive inspection reports. What we would expect at an appropriate level in every year for nursery, all the way through young people, being able to articulate what they're learning about and be able to, with support from the teacher at an appropriate level, and decide on their next steps to achieve that learning. But I will pass over to David to give the specifics for St Fergus. But it's something all of our schools would be expected to do at an appropriate pace, as David's referenced in his previous answer as well. David?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so they identified particularly at prime stages, primary three and primary seven, where there was really strong examples of the children being able to confidently talk about their next steps and how they would achieve that. And it was about rolling that out across, across the school. So all children across the school were confident and identifying the next steps. And like Paul said, with support from staff and how they would achieve these next steps.
Thank you. Councillor Crookshank, please.
Thank you, convener. Yeah, I would just like to echo Billy McPherson's comments in relation to the, the staff and how they're performing with the children. If I can take it to page seven, the quality of provision of special unit, it says that a few children disengage from learning at times. Can you explain how, how we address that when that happens? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
That, that is a reference to one pupil in particular in our primary six, who has an alternative curriculum. So what we've done is look to see where there are real positives happening within the week and identify and which part, what time of the week and, or times of the month with the individual depending on home circumstances and things, and working with third sector colleagues, with our social work colleagues and putting alternative curriculum package in place for, for that individual in particular.
Yeah, you happy with that? Councillor Crookshank?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, can I make a comment? Before I bring councillor Black, and I think the, the report is excellent as well. Given that the children, that some of the children have got enhanced needs, it's a really cracking report for the school. So please pass on my, my thanks to all the staff that are involved. I'm sure that some of the tasks are quite difficult, but seem to be, through this report, managed really well. Councillor Black.
Question about the, that statistic that something like sixty eight percent, sixty six percent of children in the role have additional support needs. Now, I mean, that's such a high figure that all, that sounds more normal than unusual. So can you tell me a little bit about what makes up that quota of people who have additional support needs? And what the school is doing to support them?
Thank you, councillor, for the question. I'll come in the first part and, and ask David to talk a little bit more about the school's strategies. So we very much follow Scottish government guidance in terms of the Scottish guidance around definitions of additional support needs. And it's not a homogenous group. It could be very wide and varied from somebody, that young person that David described, who is care experienced, and to a pupil that perhaps is on a neurodivergent spectrum. And, and so that's, that, that can be wide and varied. So it's up to the school then to look at the individual needs of each child. And we do have, across our primary schools, our, our average would be closer to thirty percent. And secondary is around the fifty to sixty percent. But in schools such as, David's are in, such as St Fergus, and where it's a small school role and we have specific specialist provision, then the percentage is much higher because they're a bigger total of the overall. We will be putting to the Children, Families and Communities Committee. We've now committed to doing an annual report because of the importance we place in supporting our children, new people with additional support needs. We will be providing a report at the end of this academic session, which will go into some detail, councillor, around articulating what is an additional support need, how they're recorded and what those common commonalities are across all of our schools. I hope that helps as an overview and I'll just pass it to you for a couple of strategies, just to give a high level overview, given that they are wide and varied. Thank you.
Yeah, so currently we have five enhanced support classes across the school from, which support children from P1 right through to primary seven. Some of our children spend full time within these classes, smaller classes with a slightly higher ratio to the number of, for staff. But a number of children are supported within the mainstream. One of the real strengths of the, of the, the staff team in terms of their inclusive practice and that level of universal provision, a number of children needs are met within the mainstream classes and through the, the amount of work and CLPL that we've, we've done around supporting children with additional support, support needs. So there are some that spend a lot of time within, within the ESAB, but we, we run a very flexible model depending on how the children are coping at different times in their life. They will either spend more time in the enhanced support classrooms or within the mainstream or a hybrid between them both.
Yeah, thank you. That's very helpful. Thanks, convener.
Cheers. Councillor Short?
Just very quickly, we often hear about getting it right for every child. And sometimes it can be sort of like a little bit flippant, but actually listening to Mr Bald that's coming through loud and clear that that really is the case. And I'm sorry, convener, but I'm going to go one step further, not just thank the staff, but also thank the parents. Because they're obviously putting a lot in and taking a lot out of it. So if you can pass that on as well, that you certainly seem to be doing a good job and long may it continue. I mean, the cohort that's coming through primary school now, life has exactly been a bed of roses since they were born. So to see that they're thriving and surviving is really great. So keep up the good work, everybody that's in Fergus. It's appreciated.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, there's no further comments. So is this report agreed? Can we move on to the next report then, Willie?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Item three then is inspection report and fostering and adoption service.
Is there an officer looking to say a few comments on this before we head to questions?
Happy just to, to give a very high level introduction, but you've got Glenn Lloyd on the call, convener, and Caroline and Lynne, who are all involved in this report. But as you can see, this is a report of a return inspection following on the inspection that was back in and published in December twenty two. And I think, you know, there's a lot of detail in there. And so I'm sure you've got questions. I think one of the, the most significant aspects I would just want to highlight is how much progress has been made between that last, that last progress report and, and this one. So you can see, we, we tried to give you a helpful high level summary on section five in the table there to show the difference between the twenty twenty two evaluations to the twenty twenty five evaluations. So significant report across, in progress and improvement across the board. And so I think that I just wanted to highlight that and thank the team for all the efforts there as well. And again, very positive and showing that there's confidence in, in the services to continue that improvement journey. So as I say, we've got my head of social work on the call and, and a couple of team members as well, if you've got questions. Thanks, convener.
Thanks. Thanks for that then. We'll go to questions and bring in Billy McPherson.
Thanks indeed, convener. And again, thank you, Audrey, for the overview. Completely concurred with what you said. I think, you know, the staff deserve congratulations. This is an extremely positive direction of travel. And as you say, the, the summary at section five shows that really in every category of inspection, it's all heading in a very positive direction. Or, you know, if you compare twenty twenty two with twenty twenty five. And so, you know, very heartening to read this report, to be frank. And my question's about the area for improvement regarding training, because there's a comment that inspectors noted that it'd been functioning well in terms of decision making, but quote, the previous area for improvement on training had not been met. And I was just really wondering if we could get some reassurance in that area, please.
Glenn, going to come in. Thanks.
Thank you, Audrey. And thank you, Bailey McPherson, for, for the question. We'd anticipated that that might be, be a concern. We, we were confident that although we'd made progress in that area, we hadn't made as much progress as we had in, in the other two areas. And, and it related to challenges with the recruitment of a panel coordinator, whose roles include the coordination of, of training and support of, of panel members. We, we have since recruited a, a panel coordinator. We, we do have now a, a training plan, that there's monthly training input over the next twelve months. And it includes, for instance, sessions on blood bone virus, trauma informed practice, developmental delay, safe and together, child protection, et cetera, et cetera. Alongside that, we're also gathering feedback from panel members in terms of quality assurance and holding regular meetings with panel members as well. And I'm pleased to say, actually, that the panel membership has extended since the inspection. So we now include both education and health representatives on the panel, and in fact, a third sector member as well. So it's all moving forward at the same pace that the other two areas of inspection were moving forward at.
That's very helpful, Glenn, very reassuring as well. So thanks very much indeed.
Billy Scott?
First of all, I'd like to say how satisfying it is to read a report that says, as a result, children were thriving due to the relationships based on love, compassion and empathy. That's, that's, it's really heartwarming to hear that. My question, though, is in relation to a, a comment that's made under how good is our leadership? Where it says that, that, that there's some uncertainty within the team that current or predicted vacancies should be recruited to. And I, I, I heard your comment about a senior post has been appointed. But are there any other vacancies within the service? And are those vacancies likely to be filled? And if not, what would be the implications for the service going forward if they're not?
So, and, and again, thank you, thank you for the question, Bailey Scott. And we have, as we say, recruited to the panel coordinator post. We've also carried out a review of the capacity of the teams and the line management of the teams overall. So we're moving towards now an, an integrated line management arrangement with one manager covering both, which we think we're able to do from available capacity and also to generate consistency across both teams. You'll see in the report that there were differences between the fostering and the adoption part of that, of that service. In terms of frontline social workers, we are recruiting posts. There have been some challenges in that regard, but we are moving to recruit posts all along the lines of optimum caseloads as described in the National Setting the Bar Report. So yes, we are, we are building back up on that as well.
Councillor Short?
Sorry, that, that was my bag at my keyboard. So sorry, it wasn't really me.
I get one of the clever bags that presses buttons for you, but there you go. Man, I was making a comment on the report. I think it's a very positive report and it's good to hear that there's good relationships built between carers and, and, and those to look after. So keep up the good work and, you know, pass that around the team and out to people that, you know, we appreciate the work that's going on, looking after some kids in the city that, that are in misneed probably. So with that, is this report agreed? Can we move on to the next item then, Willie?
Thank you, convener, for the inspiring rescue quarterly performance report, supported by area commander Todd.
Okay, Brian, are you looking to make a comment?
Thanks, convener. Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll just give you a, a very quick strategic update before we go into the report by my colleague, Paul. So in terms of an update on our strategic service review programme, or SSRP for SHOP, as part of our SSRP, we're amid a, amid a comprehensive service delivery review. The review aims to ensure that our resources, our staff, stations and appliances are matched to operational risk and demand across Scotland. We're now in the final stage of an options appraisal process, which will lead to a public consultation exercise planned for the summer. This has been a long and detailed programme of work with input from staff across Scotland and the communities we serve to develop a shortlist of potential options for change. We continue to scrutinise and refine this shortlist in detail, but currently there remain only potential options for consideration. Last year, we conducted a pre-consultation exercise shaping a future service, URS, and all elected officials from the Scottish and UK parliaments and all thirty two local authorities were invited to participate alongside our staff, trade unions and members of the public and key partners. This has helped to inform our decision making to this point, and in addition to a detailed analysis of community risk and expert insights from our staff. While it would be inappropriate to disclose further information at this stage, as recently reported in the media, I can confirm that Balmossie is one of more than twenty locations being considered for change. And we're continuing to engage with our staff who may be directly impacted by any potential change option. Can I please reassure you that no decision has been made to downgrade our close Balmossie Community Fire Station? Any changes to our station footprint or how we deliver our core emergency service is subject to full public consultation and a final decision by the SFRS board. Please be assured that as we finalise the list of potential change options, we will continue to engage with staff, trade unions, stakeholders and communities across Scotland. Should this include any options for Balmossie, local elected officials will be notified accordingly. And we would be happy to meet at this point to discuss any change options further. In terms of McAlpine Road Open Day, just a, a very quick update on the open day held at McAlpine Road Community Station last Saturday. It was a huge success and a fantastic example of community engagement and action. We welcomed around twelve hundred people through the doors, including the law provester of Dundee, Bill Campbell, and councillor Lynne Short, who thanks for, for attending. I heard you were very good with Lidl in the soup. The event was designed to be free, fun, full day for families. And we delivered that, working closely with a broad range of partners across the public, private and third sectors. We aligned the event with both the SFRS Spring Thematic Action Plan and Dundee's Local Area Improvement Plan, which helped us bring in the right partners and shape our safety messaging effectively. Fire and water safety were key themes and we reached a significant number of people with those messages. We were also very mindful of the prevalence of food poverty and we set a target to offer and provide free lunches to everyone attending, which we managed to do with over one thousand hot meals being served by the rapid relief team with additional support from T side contracts. There was a range of activities for children, everything from bouncy castle and Easter egg hunt to the opportunity to try out the hoses. We also had the army and sea cadets involved, helping to signpost young people to structured activities that could help reduce antisocial behaviour. We also managed to recruit young adults with Anthony Nolan register. The SFRS partnership with Anthony Nolan Blood Cancer Charity is something we look forward to progressing and expanding through the Dundee area in partnership with the local high schools of year. The feedback on the day was overwhelmingly positive, lots of smiles, laughter and genuine appreciation from the community. We also managed to arrange around eight hundred pounds for the firefighters charity. Overall, a really strong community event that we hope will have a lasting impact, both in terms of public understanding of what we and partners do, and ultimately a reduction in incidents in the area. So without any further ado, I'll hand it over to good commander Paul Robertson to talk through the quarterly performance report. And I'm happy to take any questions at the end of that.
Just, just before we go there, councillor Shorts put in, she looked, asked a question on Balmossie. So can we hold off?
I'm happy, happy to take questions on that first before we move, yeah.
Okay, Lynne?
Hey, thanks very much. This is going to be a very weird one, because obviously Balmossie rears its head occasionally. And I'm just looking for clarity and clarification. Does it actually sit in Angus or does it sit in Dundee?
Sits in Dundee, although it services Angus. Although it services Angus in terms of our response, where it sits, it does sit in Dundee.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, if you want to turn on me the rest of the report then.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Thanks, Brian. And so I'll give a, I'll give a high level overview. I know that you've had the report for some time, but I'll just put a bit of context to the KPIs if that's all right. So overall, it's a, it's a very positive report with nine of the KPIs still shown well within target across the twelve areas of the agreed priorities and KPIs. Regards accidental dwelling fires and priority one, incidents in Dundee are down against the three year trend with zero fatal casualties reported. There's been a slight uptick in non fatal casualties, but to put context to that, only six out of the twenty four non fatal casualties required to be removed to hospital for further checks, which indicates that the vast majority were, were light smoke inhalation. And priority two, in the business. Priority two, in the business area, again, very positive, a reduction across incidents and casualties. A reduction in post-fire audit activity captured within the performance management section on page 11, sorry, the report. Our legislative teams continue to go out and do post-fire audits with these businesses and across the instances in the quarter. There were no trends and businesses were supported to enhance their fire safety and management procedures in those businesses. Priority three, RTCs or road traffic collisions, a welcome reduction in since from the last quarter. Most of the nine were low speed and low impact. Only one incident required extrication of one casualty who was removed to hospital just for precautionary checks by Scottish ambulance service. Unwanted fire alarm signals and priority four. So despite the welcome reduction across the totals. Local management, so my station commanders, myself are working closely with our legislative teams to support and educate the duty holders where repeat alarms are causing unnecessary risk and disruption. And there's a list of the top five types of property and causes on page 15 of the report. Priority five, which is deliberate fires, both primary and secondary. Unfortunately, they are, the two arrows that are red. They are in line with the Scottish averages, so they're not massively different from the trends that are across Scotland. Primary fires for the area are actually down below the three-year average. Despite the increase in vehicle fires. Vehicle fires account for 24 of the 44 incidents. So there's a significant increase in those types of fires. There's also a spike of secondary fires in the quarter in the north of the city. But in quarter three, we would typically expect to see that with Bonfire Night and Halloween. The community action team reacted with targeted initiatives, leaflet drops and they were supported well by partners. And regards priority six, there's a full details on the training and prevention activity on page 18 of the report. I'm happy to take questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for that Paul. Billy McPherson?
Thanks convenor and thanks both to Brian and to Paul for their input there. I have two questions. One relates to what Brian had to say and one relates to what Paul had to say. So in relation to Brian's. You'll be aware that my colleague councillor Duncan's been in touch with you. I think you've had some exchanges with regard to the concerns about Balmossie. And I know it is not within your gift, but you have, I would certainly urge the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. Given that the community concerns, it would be useful to have any community engagement frankly sooner rather than later. Given the concerns. And I was just really wondering, have you a quite clear timeframe in which you will be reaching out to elected representatives, but also to the wider community? In relation, not just to anything in relation to Balmossie, but the wider issues that are on this review?
Yeah, thanks Billy McPherson. Absolutely. In terms of timelines. The options development appraisal process, so the 23 options we have for stations in Scotland. That's going to the next appraisal, the development appraisal process, which is the 29th of April. So all those 23 options will then be, go through that process. And then there'll be a decision on what ones to take to the board for the final options process if you like. I should have them by the end of the month. So 29th of April, by the 30th of April. Beginning of May, first, second of May, I should have an outline of the options that will be taken for public consultation. And at that point, no decisions will be made because it still has to go through public consultation. And at that point, when we know the final options to go for public consultation, I will reach out to all elected members and happy to have workshops, questions. And we'll be looking, that public consultation process will go out to the wider communities of Scotland. And that will be communicated through our media processes for example. So. Long story for us, the short answer is by the end of the month, we should have clear guidance on what options will be taken for public consultation. It would then appropriate for me then to come out and engage with everybody and discuss those options. At the moment, these are only options for the appraisal process. The options for Balmossie for example, might not even make it through the next process. So we just have to let the process take its place and then I'll be able to come out and engage after that.
That's great Brian. I'm assuming that you will be coming out, you know, for example, if from the options Balmossie has dropped for example, and there is no change, you will at least obviously be in a position to let people know.
Absolutely.
Effectively by Saturday. That's very helpful. My other question's completely unrelated to that and it relates to the report. So I presume it's more for Paul. And it's the information in appendix one, which I think is very positive about operational crews delivering to primary age specifically P6 and 7s. Which I think is a really good thing for operational crews to be doing. And I was just really wondering the number of schools and whether or not this is part of a rolling programme that will continue across the primary sector, because I think it's a very positive thing for the Scottish Fire Rescue Service to be undertaking.
Thanks Fraser. So there's two aspects to this. I reached back to the community action team to get further information. So in this instance, we think that we hit 70% of schools across Dundee. And that's an increase in our success and that's partly due to working with Audrey and Paul and the team and getting compliance from the schools to get us in the doors. Because we do reach out to 100% of schools. And the one that we're talking about here and specifically was a a pre Panda Bull Moonbeam operation. So it was a targeted approach as well. But the P6s and 7s, you may recall, I think from the quarter two report. And we have got an initiative that we're looking to hit all P6s and 7s before they go up to S1. And that will be ongoing. That'll be a yearly running programme. And we'll look to get into all those schools because we see that as a key, a key time to get into schools with partners and deliver a message about antisocial fire raising and other themes. So that's the intention Fraser. Hope that helps.
It does indeed. I'm grateful for the feedback. Thanks Paul.
Good.
Billy Scott. My question was about Balmossie as well. And a lot of what I was going to ask has been covered in the reply to Bailey McPherson. But I would say that in recent weeks, I've received lots of representations from concerned residents about the implications for Balmossie, should it be closed or downgraded? But I take it from Brian's opening comments that there are 23 stations being considered for change, that change doesn't necessarily mean close your own downgrading. It could mean something else. And as one of the very representatives, I would like an early opportunity to meet with you to discuss it. Should Balmossie still be carried forward through the options appraisal?
Thanks Billy Scott. Absolutely. And I would do that anyway. But yeah, just to reiterate, those 23 options are only options for change. And some of those options, there's maybe two options for the same station, but that's throughout Scotland. So. Should Balmossie be taken through for public consultation? I'll absolutely be engaging with the communities and all elected members to discuss those options.
Good, thank you. Councillor Short.
Yeah, it's just a little congratulations to the team on Saturday, the green watch that put together the event. It really, really was incredible to see so many people coming into the station. A few of the firefighters with tears in their eyes as soup went on their floor and crisps all over their station. But it was really, really good to see. And unfortunately, it was just far too cold for me to get water thrown at me for the whole four hours. So that's why I ended up on soup duty. But it was really, really good to see that the guys were also proactive about getting in touch with T side contracts and getting these meals. And I was able to convince all the grannies and nannies that the parents can't complain about the soup again because that's what they get at school dinners. So it was really, really, really good. And I did hear, because the coastguard was there. Why did they invite along the coastguard? And the answer apparently is because fighters need heroes too. So you might want to get them off the list next time round. But no, certainly, it was really, really good. And I even took a sneaky shot in the shower and it was nice and cosy after having been throwing water at me. So thank you.
Thanks and I'll certainly pass on your message to the green watch and to the wider colleagues that helped organise it. And thanks to both you and the law provost for your attendance and your support as well. It was really appreciated.
Councillor Black.
Paul, they're getting off a mute, do you know where you are?
Good grief, one day I'll get used to technology. Yeah, I was impressed.
Get a little on a lens bag.
The imagination shown in throwing soup at councillor short instead of water, keep her warm in a cold day. What I was really asking about is the car fires. And obviously there seems to be a high proportion of the deliberate fires are caused by vehicles. Now, we've heard that there's criminals burning each other's vehicles in some sort of revenge tax. There's also, there's a panic about electric vehicles going on fire. So are these two possible factors in the total that you've reported?
I'll answer that. Thanks for the question councillor Black. So I do not think that any of the fires, the car fires that were reported in quarter three were electric car fires. So by that, they were all, as it suggests deliberate. And I know that you got a fairly comprehensive report from colleagues in Police Scotland at the last scrutiny. We are working closely. There have been bespoke meetings set up with myself and Rachel Burns. The community action team are also working closely with their colleagues. We are in a position where the perpetrators of these car fires are out with the scope of education for the fire service. But the police are looking at strategy on how to send a clear message that that's not acceptable. And what we're looking to do is share information to reduce the risk in that area. I hope that's helpful.
Yep, it's also reassuring. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councillor Cruckshank.
Thank you for convenor. Yeah, I was just to ask about the fires of the bushes at Baxter Park, Swanney Pond and then Thrastern Park. Were these deliberate or was it some adverse weather thing?
Thanks for the question councillor Cruckshank. I don't know specifically which secondary fires we're talking about and dates and times. So from quarter three?
Sorry, sorry, the recent quarter. It was late at the Stopwell Forum last night and that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, okay. So I would suggest that I don't think it's been hot enough or warm enough for bushes to be going on fire on the road. So I would suggest that it's most likely that these have been deliberate fires. The community action team monitor our incident activity on a day-to-day basis. Because it's as recent as you're saying. I know that what will be happening there is they will be looking at that activity. They will be working with partners. And they will be looking at doing targeted approach with leaflet drops and letter drops in that area. Because I can only assume that if bushes are going on fire, that it's probably, it probably is deliberate activity. But the CAT team will be reacting to that and will be out in that area doing leaflet drops and such like to try and drive that down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm pleased that your open day event went really well at McAlpine. And I'm also pleased to see that you've been working closely with our building standards people and giving them some training on the high lift platform. Because you know, any building that becomes a problem at any height, it's likely you're the first call and so are they to inspect and make good. So I'm pleased at that level of partnership working's going. I suppose I should make a comment on Balmossie as well. I opposed Balmossie's closure the last time at the fireboard meeting in Forfar many years ago. And there was sort of a divide in Forfar and other pieces of Angus because there was to be an enhancement in Angus at the detriment of Dundee. And depending the geographical area Angus, it was where councillors seen they were lending their support. And hence the reason Balmossie won. It wasn't that we would have been opposed to any enhancement going into Forfar. Just didn't want to see the fire service diminished in the area that we represent. So you know, it'd be interesting to hear what if change, if it's changed to the good. You know, if it's diminished service, then I'm not obviously going to be too pleased about it like others. But just to give that a heads up to you. Okay, there seems to be no further questions. Is this report agreed? Okay, thanks for that then. Thanks for your time gents. And let's move on then Willie.
Okay, thanks for your item five. There's internal audit reports and Cathy Wiley, Chief Internal Auditor is here to speak to the item.
Okay Cathy, you want to say a few words on these reports? You want to take them one at a time or see whether questions come up?
Yeah, we can do. I just wanted to just make an overall comment. Just I won't go into the detail of each individual one. It's good to see that we've got six reports, all of which are substantial assurance. There are 19 recommendations across those six reports. The majority of them. In fact, 17 of the 19 are high, sorry, medium recommendations, medium priority. There's one high and one low are the other two. So it's good to see that. I think it's also worth just pointing out that a two-thirds of the recommendations made are about the design of controls and a third are about the operation of current controls. It's just to put that into that context. But yeah, I'm happy just to take each one as it comes and take questions on each of them.
Okay, I see Billy McPherson's looking to come in with a question.
Thanks convenor. I've actually gotten, some of them are quite short questions on each of them. But I would make the general point that I think there's substantial assurance with all of these. And you know, they're generally very positive. Could I start with the Pantana one and we'll not move on to my other ones unless anybody, you know, in case anybody else has a question on on the Pantana one. On the Pantana one Cathy. One thing that came out of the audit was the automated reminders for overdue actions seemed to just drop away after 30 days. Which strikes me as not very good, which I'm quite clearly, the auditors thought exactly the same. Has the situation been rectified to your knowledge? To ensure that you know, automated reminders continue until they're not needed anymore, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, and action's been agreed to review how that's being operated. There's some work ongoing at the moment. And there will be a change to the way that that's being monitored to make sure that that's picked up.
That's very helpful. As I say, I have a question on the other ones, but I'll go back to you at this stage convenor. Thanks.
Thanks. Has anyone else got any question on Pantana? Billy Scott.
I was going to ask about the automated reminders as well, but just following on a bit from that, when the new system's in place. As well as reminders constantly going to the person who should be carrying out the action. If it's not acted on, will a reminder be escalated? Will it go up to the person's line manager to make them aware that the person who's meant to be doing it isn't doing it?
Certainly with the internal audit actions, there's information going to both the person who's meant to be implementing the recommendation and the person who is managing that if you like. What I would say as well is there's a difference between what happens for those that are corporate. Actions that are required for some of the reporting that comes up to committee and there's more. I'll use the word robust, but I don't mean that maybe quite as strongly as that comes across. In terms of these being monitored to make sure that the information's available for reporting. But I see Andrea Calder has her hand up and she can probably tell you a bit more about that.
Yeah Andrea.
Thank you convenor. Thank you Bailey Scott. So I think Cathy has tried to outline somehow Pantana works. So there is a lot of other, I suppose, procedures that sit behind other than just the automated reminders. So there is a lot of other, I suppose, procedures that sit behind other than just the automated reminder. So for the key reports, which again Cathy mentioned, which would be your council plan, city plan, service plan. There's processes where they are reported to committee. So officers are currently reviewing that or continually reviewing them. And officers have got dashboards so they can see that there's little indicators beside any updates that have not been done. So they should be monitoring them through their service management teams and various lead officer groups. So there is a lot of other work that goes on beside it. I think Pantana's grown so vastly over a period of time. Where people are using it for fairly low level action plans as well. So some of that might not be quite as robust as for the corporate reporting. And so we're working with the officers across the council that help support that and to revise the guidance that goes out to them. And some of that was alluded to in the performance management framework that was agreed at committee on Monday night. So we would see that improve, but actions that are key actions and key performance indicators do get escalated to managers. So senior managers should be seeing those as well and making sure they're actioned. And so you are getting the most up to date information when it comes to committee.
That's very helpful both. Thank you very much.
Good. No further questions on that then. So is that report agreed? That part of the report? Okay, Billy McPherson, move on to you again. You're on mute Fraser.
Apologies. Yeah, it's about the, on the second report, it's about the area for improvement regarding system limitations necessitating, as the report says. Resource intensive manual data compilation processes which impacts efficiency and data integrity. Clearly we want to try to not have a resource intensive manual data compilation. And so really wondering, has anything been done to actually address that?
Yeah, the issue that we were highlighting there is to do with limitations within the recording capability of the system that's used for this around key dates. And so when we want to do reporting or monitoring, there's a bit of manual work needs to be done around that to gather the information. So the action that's been agreed is to finalise a forum that's been trialled to try and capture that information. To make sure that it's available in a more user friendly way and to evaluate that after it's been done. And once that's finished, we might, we might go back, I think it will be worthwhile and do some retrospective capture of that data. I'm not sure if there's anyone from the service who might want to expand on that.
Billy McPherson, I could come in, but I'm conscious we also have Lynne McBean here, who's our lead in this area. And she might be able to give better detail than I can in relation to this. So I could possibly invite Lynne McBean in.
Go for that then.
Sorry, could I ask you just to repeat that question? Sorry, because I wasn't expecting it.
Sorry, you want me to, it's about the manual data, the extent of manual data.
Okay, so the third kind of aspect of it, it is manual data at the moment, manual data collection for a lot of it. However, currently we're developing a system between our information analysts, our mosaic officers. And senior social work staff in terms of how to develop our mosaic operating system to provide us with that data. In a streamlined way which wouldn't involve so much manual collection. So that's, that's currently in process at the moment. I know they're progressing with it. Sometimes that leads to other aspects of information gathering also being highlighted. So we're hoping that along with improving this system and reducing the manual gathering of data here. That'll also impact on other aspects of the social work processes so that we'll have greater ability to both gather and analyse data from our mosaic systems.
That's very helpful and I was just really wanting, you know, sort of an assurance that the issue is being addressed and it clearly is. So I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Yeah, seems to be no further questions Fraser. So if you want to move on to the next one.
Yeah, the next one, that's the health and safety, risk assessments, incident management in schools. My question is about the comment, I have to say there's a lot of areas of good practice here. So, and I think generally these reports are all very good, but it's the point on page ninety seven, the first bullet point under the areas for improvement. Basically saying the planned training programme is not yet fully implemented. And I'm just really wondering if the service could confirm that that's actually being addressed.
Thanks Billy.
I saw coming in, sorry. I couldn't see if it was you calling me, so you're there. Thank you.
Thank you Billy McPherson for the question indeed to comment as well. We work very closely with our colleagues in the health and safety team around this. And as you referenced, I think the assurance around the new programme that we are rolling out. So the rollout at the time of this internal audit that we'd asked for, the plan is in place and the plan is on schedule. And that is being rolled out in accordance with the plan, which was reviewed by the internal audit team. So yes, I can give that assurance that the plan continues as scheduled and the training programme's been developed in line with feedback. As a result of all of these audits, but also the visits to the schools using the new framework and tools that we've developed with our colleagues in health and safety. Hopefully that helps. Thank you.
It does indeed. Thanks very much Paul.
Again, there seems to be no further questions on health and safety. So Fraser.
Yeah, the next one then is about the Tayside's region deal. And it's the comment about not all projects have clearly established baselines with which to measure delivery of their commitments. I'm very conscious that, you know, this is a project, you know, Tayside's real has been going for some time. And I'm just really wondering, I noticed that Mo Saunders is actually on the call there, just popped up on my screen there. And I was just really wondering if you, maybe you just give us some assurances that, you know, that that aspect has been addressed.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you very much for giving us the question beforehand. So it obviously, as you say, Tayside is a partnership, three hundred million pounds of public money. So to give you assurance, we've developed the deal, working with both governments and also looking at national best practice across all the deals in Scotland. All the projects have to develop a business case, call it green book, which is their commitment for the funding to be released. And that's supported by a legal agreement. So within that, all are aware that they have requirement for effective reporting and monitoring, including the reporting of benefits. I think what's been very helpful, thank you to audit colleagues, working with ourselves and section ninety five officer Robert Emma at the time. Was that their recommendation has been helpful for us in highlighting an area of development which both the section ninety five officer and the partnership. And both governments were aware of and have been working on. And the audits, I think it's worth maybe just saying that this audit was undertaken before the most recent benefit reporting period for our partnership. And we're very pleased to report improvements in reporting have been seen and made. Many of the projects were the very early ones where I think it's fair to say that both the partnership but and also governments were still developing. How the reporting and the monitoring, particularly around benefits was being developed. For those of you who can see councillor Short on this committee who have been there from the beginning will be aware that the benefits reporting and the development of that. Actually followed the signing of the deal and the first couple of years of delivery. So to give assurance, the partnership, we have a management group, which is director level. You have representatives from each of the four local authorities. They've welcomed this report and the action and have made a commitment to support the projects, you know. They are the sponsors for the project to provide assurance for the partnership. And you'll see there, there's an action for reporting within the next sort of quarter and being clear about what's still outstanding and it will be completed. And again, just to finish on, the partnership are doing a reshaping exercise to look at the, we're in the fifth year of our deal, ten year deal. So for the next part of the programme and benefits, monitoring and evaluation will be a key part that to give assurance to the partnership and obviously to yourselves. As an audit and scrutiny committee, that we will be able to deliver the programme. But very happy to take any question, both questions.
That was both reassuring and very comprehensive, Mo. So I'm very grateful for that. It fully answers my query. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I'm going to be asked a question, probably it's off our officers. I don't see a great deal of reports that come reporting the outcomes of the cities deal. I seem to recall one, it's probably some quite time back, where I was asking questions about its performance in relation to job creation. Because, you know, given that a lot of money had been spent, well, weren't they any close, we weren't as close as I thought we would be to reducing the six thousand jobs. So now that we've got a more robust reporting system, when do we think we'll receive a report to council? That will be for every councillor to be able to have a look at that, see how it's performing and perhaps ask questions against, you know. Ones that perhaps aren't making the grade.
And sorry, just to say that I'm in a room with Gregor Hamilton, so that there's both of us. So if I maybe answer, if I call it for the partnership and then Gregor may come in for Dundee State Council. So again, to give you assurance as part from the partnership, we have a commitment and requirement from both governments to do an annual performance report. So we have just completed that and it was published in March, just last month. And I mean, very, it's publicly available from the joint committee that we have for our partnership, but very happy to share that around this committee and order if that's helpful. And we also have an annual conversation with both governments just ahead of that. So I'm very pleased to say for the deal that we've released over a hundred and thirty million pounds of the funding, which is a hundred and fifty actually. Well, we're actually halfway there. And we have delivered just over two thousand four hundred jobs and brought in a hundred and eighty million pounds worth of leverage. And I think it's maybe, you know, we've spoken about this with joint committee members. Delivery quite often follows a couple of years after the actual project has been delivered in all the benefits. And for our deal, we've got ten years of a programme of funding, but we've got fifteen years to deliver all those benefits. And we are currently on track to do that. I'll pass, I'll just mute myself and pass across to Gregor.
Just to say, it would be useful to have that report circulated around the scrutiny committee. It would be appreciated.
Yeah, certainly we'll do that.
Thanks for your comments. Gregor.
Billy Keane, I'm happy to have a conversation with. Sorry, happy to have a conversation with Robin Presswood and Paul Thompson and bring a report to an appropriate council committee at the earliest opportunity. I think as more highlights, we've reached the halfway point in the deal and it would be appropriate that we update members on the projects that have been delivered, particularly those in Dundee, but also in the wider region.
Yeah, thanks for that. So any further questions on this report? Okay, we'll move back yourself then Fraser for the.
Right, so second last one, financial forecasting. My question really, again, good areas of good practice, which is, which is good. The first area for improvement indicates that the revenue budget control manuals out of date, needs reviewing, updating and formal approval. Has that been progressed?
You're maybe going to have to get another answer to that, Paul Thompson.
I think Paul's got his hand in the air there. He's the man on this one, yeah.
Yeah.
So thank you Bailey McPherson for the question. So just to confirm, as the report outlines, the manual itself is required to be updated. But I would give an assurance that the manual remains largely unchanged in terms of the changes that are required. So it sets out clearly within the manual in terms of the controls for preparing and monitoring the budgets. And the roles and responsibilities for various people within that. There is a section within the manual, however, that has details in terms of contact details, who's responsible for specific areas. And there have been a number of changes of personnel within the service throughout the year, both in services and corporate finance. And these are the areas that need to be changed. So just to give an assurance that that work has almost been completed and the updated manual will be circulated together with the final budget volume for twenty five, twenty six.
That's, that's very helpful. I dare say you're one of the very people that the contacts will have changed, no doubt. Absolutely. But that's, that's very helpful. Gives you the assurance, you know, that what are obviously quite minor changes are actually being addressed. So thanks for that, Paul.
Okay, no further questions Fraser. So again, on to the last one, purchase pay.
Yeah, the fact that the final one is about the comment about the list of exceptions to no purchase, no pay should be clarified. I was just really wondering, are the, what are the circumstances where payment can be made without a purchase order? Because I would have thought it would be good practice to always have a purchase order for, for any, you know, any payment that goes out the door. But perhaps Paul can clarify.
Yeah, Paul.
So thanks again Bailey McPherson. So there are a number of exceptions that are outlined in the standing orders for payments that we would make as a council. For which no purchase order would be required and they generally relate to payment of utilities, rates, council tax, et cetera. And there's provision within the standard order for the executive director of corporate services to waive any other exceptions as well. So the areas that would generally be accepted from the process would be where the council are making a payment on behalf of somewhere else. So for example, if I say the corporate appointment scheme, so where we are paying bills on behalf of individuals, we generally wouldn't send out a purchase order on behalf of the council. Even though that system's, that payment's going through our system. There may be, for example, payment of grants, et cetera, which is clearly not procuring goods and services. So a purchase order wouldn't be relevant. Also other payments that are being made on behalf of staff, things like payments towards AVC providers, union subscriptions, et cetera. So these are generally a very limited number of circumstances where no purchase order would be required. But you're absolutely correct in the main for all our payments where purchases are being ordered, a purchase order is required.
That's helpful clarification. I don't think anyone has a problem with things like utility bill, recurring things, you know, utility bills and rates and so on. And the other exceptions that you indicated. So I've no problem with that. Great, grateful for the reply. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks for that. No further questions. So if this can be agreed, oh, Billy Scott.
I just wanted to ask a question about the long outstanding orders that have not been invoiced that are remaining in the system. Why would that be? Is that because the purchase order was raised, but the purchase never actually went ahead, but no one's gone back into council purchase order?
So thank you Bailey Scott. That might be one of the circumstances that which there'd be an outstanding order in the system. There may also be circumstances where the value of the order was received was less than the overall order that had been input to the system. So we do send reports regularly around services, asking them to clear out those orders. And there's further controls put in place at the year end where we will delete any outstanding orders in the system to make sure that they are up to date.
Thank you. Yeah, again, it seems to be no further questions. So is this report agreed? Okay, thanks for that. And over to you again then, will you to move on?
Yeah, thanks. Item six, internal audit plan updating progress report. Again, it's a report by Cathy Wiley.
Yeah, like to say a few words on this one Cathy.
Just a few things I wanted to draw to your attention, just to say that this obviously has the table with all the items that are in the current plan there. We've got one new item that has been added on the housing stock, external wall insulation. And we've, we're proposing to remove two audits because there's work already undertaken within the services, which would mean there would be a bit of duplication if we were to audit it at the moment. And that's around a review of the arrangements to oversee the next phase of the fairness and local child poverty action plan. And to review the processes to plan and carry out maintenance on council housing stock. We will leave these, obviously they're in our audit universe and we will revisit next year whether or not we should be bringing them back into the plan at that point. This report has more than just the progress update on the plan and the agreed internal audit recommendations. I've given you a progress report on the implementation of our action plan to make sure that we're compliant with the new internal audit standards that came in on the first of April. And I've also given you the Scottish Local Authority Chief Internal Auditor Group annual report. I just feel it's important for you to see the work that's being done there. It's a really good resource for me, for peer support. And also giving us some information that we can use within some of the audits, for example, the cyber, sorry, not. For example, the cyber, sorry, not cyber, the climate change audit that we're undertaking at the moment. We've used information that's been pulled together jointly by members of the Slackyag team there. So the only other thing really, just to draw attention, obviously we haven't delivered everything that we had hoped to do by April, but we're certainly much further forward than we were at the same point last year. And we're definitely catching up with some of the backlog that we've had in the plan over the past few months. There's quite a number of reports that we're hoping to get to June, but what I would say is that a significant number of them are either already out as draft reports with services or we're at the final stages of reviewing the files and draft reports ourselves to get them out. And there will be a few more reports coming out in the next week or so. So I think we're on track to deliver a significant amount of the remainder of the plan in June. We have identified a few items that we're going to move and say we'll deliver in September. And that's really just to make sure that we're not spreading ourselves too thin and that we've got lots of things progressed but not finalised by June and to try and focus to make sure we finish as much as we can by that June meeting. Other than that, the only other thing that I wanted to note in here is just a bit, a little bit about the recommendations. It's roughly a third and a third and a third, not quite, but roughly in terms of outstanding recommendations that haven't reached their agreed due date yet. Others that have had an extension to their date and then a third where we don't have a revised due date, but they have gone past the date that they were originally agreed with. It's obviously important that we do have agreed dates for these and that we're moving them forward. Because as long as these are still outstanding, we don't, the risk that these were agreed to address is still there in terms of the set, the set, sorry, the set. Sorry, the one's going completely, the systems, that's the word I'm looking for. The systems that we're, that we're talking about with each of these recommendations. But that's all that I wanted really to draw attention to, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for that Cathy. I notice Billy McPherson's looking for a question.
Jimmy was first actually.
Didn't notice that, sorry. Councillor Black.
Thanks Fraser for that and convenor. Two questions for me. One is, can you see a bit more about why the external wall installation has been included in the programme? And the second question is about the Safety Alarm Response Centre. I see that the review is complete, but the assurance is only limited. And I wonder if we are completely up to date with the technological changes that have been made in the way that telephones and community alarm systems and so on are working. If, you know, basically gone digital and I'm not clear that we actually have as well. So those are my questions.
So the first one, the EWI was included as a result of the decision that was made. I can't remember, it does actually tell you in my report which one it was.
I think it was made at a housing committee just recently, based on the Kirk Street issue.
Yes, it's up 4.2. It was part of the report that was agreed at that meeting that we would undertake this piece of work. It's been undertaken by the external support contract people just to give that bit of removal away from and make it a bit more independent in terms of that, that review. It's actually at draft report stage now. I've, I think the draft report has been issued for factual accuracy checking to the service and we're just working through their comments on that at the moment.
The other one was the Safety Alarm Response Centre.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not in a position to be able to answer that question at the moment. I don't know if there's anybody else who's in the meeting at the moment who could do that.
Wish.
Yeah, happy to. Thank you for that, Councillor Black. So in terms of the Safety Alarm Response Centre audit, there were actions determined from that that were to be progressed and previously reported. So some of that, for example, was in respect of the policy associated to the Safety Alarm Response Centre, but also in respect to key performance indicators to manage and track performance of the service. So happy to share with you with this, the particular actions that were previously identified and reported to scrutiny.
That, that would be useful. Is the reason for a limited assurance anything to do with the changes in technology?
No, I don't, I don't think, from memory, I don't think that was the reason. It was more to do with getting policies up to date and, and reviewing resources and the actual work that was assigned to that service.
Thank you. Thanks, convenor.
Okay, Billy McPherson.
Thanks, convenor. Cathy, you mentioned in your introduction that a couple of intended reviews were being removed because of potential, if you like, duplication. And I just wanted to have a clearer understanding specifically with regard to the original intended governance review on child poverty and fairness action plan. What specifically is it that's happening that means that you want to remove it? The reason I've, I've an interest is really, we know from reports to City Governance Committee about the, frankly, the challenge in meeting and making progress towards Scottish government targets in relation to, you know, the reduction in child poverty. And it strikes me as an important area. So I was just really wondering if you could tease out a little bit the, the detail of why this specific one is being removed at this stage.
Merely it's due to the fact that when we put the plan together, it's quite far in advance of when some of the audits will happen. And in the interim from the time that was identified that it would be a good idea to look at this, to actually us coming along and saying to the service, right, let's plan this. They've already started a review of their own and it just doesn't make sense for us to be interrupting them while they're doing that, to ask a lot of questions, which would duplicate some of what they're looking at.
Right. Understand that in terms of review of their own, will we get sight of that? Because as I say, I think it's an area of importance. I'm sure other elected members would agree. And I think we would be interested if there's an internal review out with, if you like, what internal audit are doing, given the importance of the area, it would be useful to, you know, be kept up to date with progress.
The chief of tech isn't here, so who's, who's stepping up to the mark? Andrea.
Yeah, so part of the, I suppose part of the update, we have been updating the Dundee Partnership Management Group because the, we've got the Child Poverty and Inequalities Strategic Leadership Group that's now been set up, which wasn't in place previously. So that is obviously a kind of new governance process to look at child poverty across the partnership. And that includes the joint Dundee and Health, Dundee City Council and Health Fairness Action Plan. So there's been a dashboard created, like pulling out all the indicators in and they are starting to review those and look at those in a bit more detail. And then below that, we're trying to work through what kind of interim measures, other measures that we could put in place that would help to track, I suppose, progress across different partners and what they are actually doing to try and work together with us to improve child poverty across the city. Separately to that, the Improvement Service also do a kind of independent review every year as well and they give us kind of feedback. So we will be preparing the next child poverty plan to come to committee at the end of June. So what we could do is maybe make sure we capture some of what's happened and maybe things that we plan for the future around more of the governancey bit. Because normally we're telling you more about the outcomes and the performance.
Yeah, that would be helpful because clearly, I think if we went back to the original target scrutiny reporting, it was null. And so it would be useful if you, if you're bringing something back perhaps before the recess, that, that, you know, and including that, that would be really helpful Andrea. So, so thanks for that.
The other thing, just as an aside, that's also happening is the Scottish government are looking at their new delivery plan for child poverty, which we're expecting towards the end of this year. So that's for, it's supposed to come into play for 26 to 2031. So we expect that might change targets and key actions as well. So there's a bit of that coming as well, which we will, we will need to reflect on. We will mention that in, in the fairness action plan as well.
Yeah, I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Billy Scott.
So I just wanted to clarify that came out of a question that Councillor Black asked. In the table where it has assurance level, for instance, the one that Jimmy mentioned about the community safety alarm, the limited is the assurance level as it was at the time that the audit was carried out. That's not what the assurance level is now, because presumably if all the actions have been completed, it's no longer limited, it's been completed and it'll be substantial or more.
What we do with items that have, have limited assurance, when I produce my annual report in June, which will be obviously the next, the next meeting, I usually do an update on where we are with anything that's had a limited assurance during the year to see how many of the actions are complete and what's still outstanding. So you'll get an update on that in my annual report, which will be coming up to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Seems to be no further questions then. Can this report be agreed? Okay, we're ready to move on again then, Willie.
Okay, thanks. Take you on to item seven, the internal audit plan. Again, Cathy, we'll speak to that item.
So this one is the internal audit plan for, let me get the year right, 2026, 27, no, 2526. And we've prepared this plan in the same way as we've always prepared it. We look at the risk registers, we look at the work we've done before, we look at the work that the counter fraud teams undertaken, look at the wider context that the council is operating within. We speak to a number of managers and all of CLT and we also went out and asked members if they had any thoughts that they wanted us to consider. We put all that together and we think about that in the context of what we call the audit universe, which is a very large list of all the systems and all the areas where the council has responsibility, where there potentially could be an audit that we would want to do. We do also think about where you might be getting other assurances, so from example, Education Scotland or the Care Inspectorate, and we try not to have any duplication across the work that we're doing there. We speak to external audit as well to make sure that we're making sure that we're, we're not duplicating with them either. And so this plan that we're putting into today is what's come out of all of that process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, either about the process or the items that are in the plan.
Is there any questions for Cathy on this? Billy McPherson?
Yeah, it's regarding the information on page 148, in particular the parking meter procurement inclusion. Can I just be clear, there was, as elected members will be aware, there was an issue regarding the recent parking meter procurement, which meant it had to be withdrawn and reissued. And I'm not being critical there because I think there were some technical issues around how parking meters operate for want of a, you know, for perhaps a more non-technical phrase on a technical matter. I was just really wondering, is this in relation to that and ensuring that we're always, with regard to any further work in that area, that we've always got a procurement process that is compliant and we're happy with the tender going forward?
Yeah, we were asked to put that piece of work in as a result of, of that. I don't, I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything to that. We're just in the process of agreeing the scope of that one just now.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful. I think that pretty much answers my question. It is, it is in relation to that. So grateful for that. Thank you.
Good. Seems to be no further questions. So this report cannot be agreed. Thank you. We'll move on again then, Willie.
Yeah, thanks convenor. Item eight then is internal audit strategy and mandate and charter. Again, Cathy, we'll speak to item.
Busy day for you Cathy.
Thank you, I know, and for you. So here we are. The, these are two items that are required by the internal audit standards. There's always been a charter, you'll have seen that in the past, we bring it up to every now and again when we make changes to it. The charter is really about how the governance of the operation of internal audit works, how we interact with other areas of the council, et cetera, what our reporting arrangements are and what have you. But the start, the, the, the new standards require that that also includes the mandate, which is the authorisation that we have in terms of what internal audit should be doing. For us in Scotland, that's governed, governed by the local authority accounting regulations from 2014. And we've, we've replicated them within the mandate, within the document. We've never had that written down separately in our own documents before. The regulations require that a Scottish local authority has an internal audit service and that it operates to the international standards that have been prescribed, which is currently now from the 1st of April, global internal audit standards as they've been amended to apply in the public sector in, in Scot, in the UK. This is one of the reports where we did have some issues with some of the links when we PDFed them. The links went a bit, a bit awry. So I think Willie did issue new papers today, which have got hopefully correct links that will work if you want to go to any of the further documents that are in here. The other thing that the standards require is that there's a strategy. That's my strategy for how I will implement the mandate and make sure that we're compliant with what's required in terms of what's in the charter and what's in the standards. Some of that information's been made available in the past to you through my annual plan or through my annual report, but this just pulls it all together in one document. And there is an action plan in there which highlights at a high level some of the issues that we need to be addressing going forward, just to make sure that we are able to deliver the service in the way that we're required to. So the mandate and the charter require approval by the, the audit committee, per the standards and the strategy requires your consideration to make sure you're happy that it covers what it needs to so that the mandate can be met. So again, happy to take any questions.
Yeah, any questions? Is people happy to agree to this report and set Cathy's mind at rest moving forward? Okay, thank you for that. Willie, move on.
Yeah, thanks. Item nine then is the DCA Audit Scotland Annual Audit Plan Reports, a report by the Executive Director of Corporate Services.
Yeah, Paul, I think you're bringing in Audit Scotland as well.
Yes, yes, convenor. By your permission, Rachel Brown from Audit Scotland is, is on the call to, to speak to the paper.
Okay, Rachel.
Thanks. Finally got myself off mute. Thanks, convenor. I'll just draw your attention to a few key points in the, in the audit plan as members of this committee are considered those charged with governance under auditing standards. So I'm Rachel Brown, I'm an audit director in Audit Scotland and I'm your appointed external auditor. So one aspect of the plan is me confirming to you that I am independent of the council in my role as external auditor. And the plan sets out the scope of our audit for the 2425 financial statements and the wider scope areas in the public sector in Scotland. There is a wider requirement of the auditor than just an audit of your financial statements and a high level summary of the scope of the audits given at paragraph five, which I think is at page 177 of your papers. And that section also sets out the respective responsibilities of me and my team and of the council. I'll also draw your attention to paragraph nine in the plan. We've met separately with the convenor of this committee to speak about how members are kept informed about fraud risk and actual and suspected matters of fraud. So I'll just say if any members are aware of any matters related to actual or suspected fraud that has not, that they believe has not been brought to my attention, they can raise that with me today. And I'll ask that again before I sign off here accounts. Obviously, I receive scrutiny committee papers as well, so we see the counter fraud reporting and so on that you get. But if there's any matters that you feel you need to bring to my attention, you get an opportunity now at the planning stage and at the conclusion of the audit to draw those matters to my attention. And just to confirm that we do keep in contact with officers at the council about counter fraud activity and with internal audit about any instances of actual or suspected fraud. The next key point in the plan I'm going to draw to your attention is on the section on the audit of the annual accounts and it's exhibit one, which sets out materiality levels for our audit. And I apologize now, there's two typos on page 179. The materiality level for the council, single entity figures, is £17.3 million and the performance materiality is £8.65 million. You have slightly different figures that should be updated. You have slightly different figures that should have been updated in the version you have. Just to confirm that the percentages for the materiality levels that we work to are similar to last year. We're operating on a similar basis to last year. And those figures are, the materiality level is the, the kind of point at which I would consider a misstatement or an error in the accounts to affect the decision making of people using those accounts for economic decisions. And we would expect any error above that level to be adjusted. And performance materiality is a trigger for me and my team if we found an error or misstatement at that level. That would trigger us to consider further audit work. And the final figure in your materiality exhibit is the reporting threshold. So we would bring to you in the annual audit report at the end of the audit year, any misstatements above that half million pound threshold there. Less significant misstatements would not be reported. The next exhibit in that section sets out our identified significant risks of material misstatement in your financial statements. And those are similar to last year. One of them has dropped off the list and for twenty four, twenty five is considered less significant. So I've not detailed that on the audit of the pensions asset. I will draw to your attention the first risk, significant risk and material misstatement, the fraud caused by management override of controls is presumed as a significant risk in every audit. It's not specific to Dundee City Council, it's not an observation on Dundee City Council's governance or operation. It's a standard significant risk across all audits. You'll see that in any annual audit plan and bordered like that in any Audit Scotland annual audit plan. And that sets out our planned audit response. And for Dundee City Council, that's, that's standard response. There's nothing that we've identified in the council that would require an additional specific audit response to that risk. And the next two significant risks material misstatement are around the valuation, around the, the subjectivity and estimation in the valuation of council dwellings and in other land and buildings. And that's to do with testing the assumptions made by the valuer and confirming the reasonableness of those assessments and looking at the management's oversight of that valuation. Because you've got a five-year valuation programme for other land and buildings. So we'll look at the value of the assets that are not formally revalued in that period. There's a four-year period between formal valuations. So again, those risks are relatively standard and the response to that will look fairly similar if you hark back to prior, prior year annual audit plans. And the section below that just says key audit matters will be brought to you in the annual audit report. So less significant risks and material misstatement, anything we find by way of significant findings in the audit will be brought to you in September in the annual audit report. And just to let you know, at, I'm going to say page one hundred and eighty three of your papers, under group audit, group, the group auditing standards or auditing standards around group accounts have been revised. So there are new and expanded requirements for the audit of group accounts. So we're reporting in that regard on the components you have and our proposed audit approach. At this point, based on prior year audited figures, none of these elements of the group accounts are material. And should that change when we see the unaudited accounts at the end of June, we would let you know if we were amending that audit approach. So if we need to speak to, if I need as the group auditor to speak to the auditors of other components, I will do that. I must say, I am the auditor for several other components. But there's a private firm is a component auditor for something which may become material during the twenty four, twenty five group accounts audit. This plan also covers the audit of the charitable trusts for which councillors are sole trustees. So they sit under section one oh six of the nineteen seventy five Act. And just to say, my new senior audit manager will be the appointed auditor for those trusts for twenty four, twenty five. So the, the key planning matters are brought to you as part of Dundee City Council plan for this year. And that sets out materiality levels. And the only risk that we've identified for the trusts is again, that presumed significant risk around management override of controls. So there's a section there relating to the trusts. And we set out at page one hundred and eighty seven, the wider scope areas that we look at and also the requirements of best value audit. Best value audit is now fully integrated into the annual audit. And we do thematic work that is selected by the Accounts Commission each year. And for this third year of the five-year audit appointment, it's on transformation, service transformation. So I will be bringing you a best value management report on transformation to the June scrutiny committee. And the final sections of my plan are around the timetable for reporting. So the, the main outputs are this annual audit plan, the best value management letter, management report, I should say, in June. And we aim to sign off the annual accounts at the end of September. So that's like last year, brought back within the usual target timescales. And the audit fees set out for the council and the trusts at paragraph forty five. And that's been agreed with officers. And the very last section of the plan sets out confirmation that we're not placing any formal reliance on internal audits work, although we take account of everything that Cathy's team does and reports. And that informs our wider scope audit opinions. And we set out a section on our audit quality arrangements so that you get some assurance over the quality of the services that I provide to the council. And the last section of that sets out that we seek feedback from the council through surveys of senior officers and the chair of the committee at the conclusion of each audit year. But if there's any feedback that committee members want to give or ask of the audit team, I'd welcome that feedback at any time. So that's a whistle stop tour of my annual audit plan. So I'll pause there for any questions, any matters relating to fraud or any questions around the audit approach. Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks for that. Is there any questions? Any matters relating to fraud that you'd like to bring to Rachel's attention? Or is the report agreed? No, councillor Black.
I put my question in a while ago, actually. Sorry, Convenor. So I'm not surprised you didn't see it. It's to do with paragraph twenty three and the charities that the auditor is going to be looking at. Without going into too much detail, recently I've been involved as a director of a charity, which was in financial trouble. And as part of that whole process, which was a bit of a, I discovered that although I'd been appointed to this charity by the council, I could end up being personally liable for decisions that I had taken or could have taken as a member of the board of directors. Now, in terms of these trusts, I've been off the council for a few years and so I don't know exactly what the current practice is. But I don't remember ever getting particularly full accounts of any of the bodies when I was in the council before, apart from the Fleming Trusts, which I used to go to the board. So I think it would be good if the auditor was able to reassure us that we do get sufficient information to know whether we can avoid personal liability if things go wrong, if we are actually being kept in touch with what we need to know to ensure that all is well. The Fleming Trust is quite a major body and it owns a lot of property, it charges a lot of rents. And the other things can be quite big as well. Belmont Trust Estate is quite a substantial property. So, you know, there, there is potential for things to go wrong. So I'd be interested to hear the auditor's comments about that.
Yeah. Can I, can I just say that, that officers are currently reviewing the position regarding membership of trusts and whatever that council officers and members could be involved in to make sure that they're not putting themselves forward into a position where they could be liable for things. But I'll, I'll pass over to yourself, Rachel, for comment. I, I, I do recall seeing most of these jumias coming up with the accounts. So I'll let Rachel pick up on that for you.
So I'll comment on the trusts to say that as trustees of a registered charity, you do have legal requirements and that puts you in a situation where you have legal responsibilities. And for the section one oh six trusts, as councillors of Dundee City Council and as trustees of these bodies, you're reliant on information from officers in terms of unaudited annual accounts coming to you and reports on the operation of the trust, any charitable grants, the operation of the properties. And my understanding on the Fleming Trust is that those properties are run effectively in the same way as housing revenue account. So you have assurances from officers around, and indeed from the audit of the HRA, around how that's operating. So yes, you have responsibility and liability in that regard. But you also have, or I say, you should have. I hope if you, if you do not feel satisfied by the reporting you receive as a trustee, you should be raising that with officers in the council and potentially with me and my team as the auditor. But in terms of report, reporting to trustees should be on the operation of the, the trusts, on the financial management and the financial position of the trusts. And we would then bring you or give you an independent auditor's report on the annual accounts. And on, it may actually be a separate annual audit report this year for, for the charitable trusts. But we would come back and give you a report on key matters relating to that. So hopefully that would give you some assurance in that regard. So the responsibility, I see Paul Thompson's going to come in there. But yeah, I would say officers should provide you with the information you need. If you're not getting it, you should be raising that. And that in terms of the financial management and the financial position of the trust, you'll receive a report at the end of September, along with the council report on the trusts. I'll pause there and let Mr. Thompson come in.
Good, Paul.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. So just to confirm, as Bailey Keenan mentioned, we are undertaking an exercise just now to look at the membership of outside bodies. But as far as the trusts within the audit report are concerned, we will, as we always do, be giving elected members a full briefing on the accounts once they're finished. And I'm happy to incorporate within that briefing some information in respect of the charities, just outlining the purpose of these various charities, further detail on what they do and outline and draw some responsibilities with regard to that.
Thanks, Convenor. I think that's very helpful, the replies that we've had. And thank you, Paul, for that too.
No problem. So is there any other questions? The audit plan agreed? Okay, thank you for that then. Right, Willie, we're ready to move on again.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. But remaining item, item ten, other reports available to the remit of the scrutiny committee. Again, it's a report by Cathy Wiley.
Okay, useful report if people are looking to delve a bit deeper into some of the other organisations that are surround us as councillors. Is there any questions on this report? Can that report be agreed then? Okay, thank you for your time. It's much appreciated. Go and enjoy the rest of your day now.
Thanks, Convenor.
Thank you.
Bye.